All right, everyone. Why don't we go ahead and get started? Good morning, everybody. This is the beginning of a busy and important and could be a long day for us. So we'll start with the first thing for us. I was going to say on our agenda, but I don't want to mix agendas up. So the first thing on our slate for today as the Board of Trustees, we're going to call this work session of the Board to order. And then, as usual, we'll begin with our roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. President Taylor.
I'm here.
Vice President Nicollet.
Good morning.
I am here. Trustee Church.
Here.
Trustee Mayberry.
Yeah.
Trustee Rodriguez. And Trustee Smith.
She's going to be a little delayed, but she will be here, yes.
Delayed, okay. And our student is not here. Hopefully, she's in class. We have a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. It's time for our pleasure of allegiance. And what a surprise, we're going to ask the birthday boy to lead us in the pledge today.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you very much, Mr. Mather, for spending your 21st birthday with us here today. Probably for your second or third time, but, you know, we're just, you know, ish. All right, we're going to go to Agenda Item 1.04, Action to Adopt the Agenda. It is the pleasure of the Board looking for motion.
(inaudible)
Okay, motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, look in your way because you jumped right in on that motion. Public comment, thank you. He falls inside. All right, do we have public comment on this? Thank you very much, J.J. Okay, there's a motion on the floor from Clerk Minneto, and thank you, counsel. A second from Trustee Rodriguez. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion carries, and let the record show it is unanimous. And again, Trustee Smith will be joining us shortly. Okay, we'll go on to what we are here for. This is, I won't read the whole title because it's very, very long, and at the end of the day, we are here for budget business. We are here for that regarding our fiscal year '22-'23 budget for all of our funds and whatnot. So we'll turn it over to our CFO, Mr. Mather, and our Budget Director, Mr. Basel. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Good morning. So this morning, I wanted to kind of outline where we're headed in these discussions. And so I wanted to start with the top, and this may be a redundant theme you'll hear this morning, but we want to make sure that you know that we heard you loud and clear on April 12th. But on April 12th, you provided direction to us to address some critical labor shortages in transportation and three other areas, and we heard you loud and clear. Staff has been working very hard on the compensation concepts and other concepts we talked about on the 12th. And those discussions and those concepts really drive the preparation, the construction of this general fund budget for fiscal year '23. Those are the first funding priority. We understand how critical those needs are, and so they are top priority as we, again, craft a budget for next fiscal year. So Jeff's going to go into great depth on that, but we have identified additional cost savings on top of the $451,000 preliminary surplus that we identified in March. We've identified some additional cost savings. However, this is a fluid situation, right? We've just started the collective bargaining and discussions with our associations on the concepts we talked about on the 12th. So from a cost standpoint, a lot of this is not yet finalized and won't be for some time. So it is a fluid situation that we will manage and hopefully get to the finish line by May 24th. But if that's not possible, that's okay. I mean, we can still kind of manage our way around the budget. So again, Jeff's going to go into that in more depth, but I wanted to kind of tee that up with you to help you understand, again, this drives the general fund budget for this fiscal year more than anything else. And then we'll also talk about other funds besides the general fund. That's the other half of the budget. So the general fund's roughly half of the total budget here of a billion or so, and we'll talk about our special revenue funds. We'll talk about our capital funds or debt service funds and so forth. So that kind of, you know, preps you to what our agenda will be in addition to kind of the matters I talked about in the prior slide. We will go over some zero-cost reorganizations just to be fully transparent about some fairly minor changes in our organization, but still important for you to know. And so with that, I will turn it over to Jeff to kind of go through the general fund.
Thank you, Mark. So we'll start the general fund off with the April 12th decisions regarding the critical labor shortage. So the first decision that day was to reduce the level of service in transportation for the next school year, to have the hub system in place for the middle and high school levels. The other decision that was made that day was to direct the superintendent and transportation staff to look into other options for transportation, such as optimizing our routes and possibly looking at the reduction in bus stops at the elementary level amongst several other The third decision that night was about housekeeping, the service level of custodial services, specifically to vacuuming at schools. It was supposed to be for all schools, but Facilities is still fine-tuning that to see if that can be the case at all schools. And then the last direction provided that night was to open negotiations with the Washoe Education Support Professionals regarding compensation related to the critical labor shortage. So as Mark said, this is the driver behind the rest of the FY23 budget process. So the adjustments that were made for the FY23 general fund budget are, first, the service level reduction. So any staffing reductions from those will partially offset any potential compensation increases. We don't have the total net cost right now because those negotiations haven't closed, but once they do, we'll have the actual cost. But right now, we're tentatively estimating a net cost to the general fund of $1.5 to $2 million.
Okay, I'm going to put you on pause just a moment. Trustee Church, you have a question?
I think so. I think it's right on point here. So just explain to me that, please, we've offset costs, we've kind of anticipated these vacant positions, we give more compensation, but suppose the economy goes sideways and suddenly we fill every position? Do we have the money?
To fill the, well, we're reducing the number of positions. So like for bus drivers, for example, it was to reduce the total number of bus drivers by 43 positions, and so that brings the total number of bus driver positions to 260 positions. So we would be able to fill all 260 of those positions.
So ideally, we want more bus drivers, but we cut them because we couldn't get them. We give more compensation. If some miracle happens and we get lots of applicants, we would not, we would not open those back up. Is that correct?
Well, I think we'd have to address that if that happened in next year.
Obviously, not likely. Thank you.
If I might add, a part of a conversation we had, not exactly on that, Trustee Church, but just on, this is, there's a limited time to this. It was two years till that, in the event that that does happen. Basically, bottom line, it will be just coming back here to the Board because then there's a change that would need to be made. So if some miracle happens, right, and let's all pray for a miracle because that will be something good, then our budget team can come back to us and say, hey, you know, we have this opportunity, and can we make some adjustments to that? So it doesn't tie our hands. And I think, I think that's important for all of us.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the next part after the compensation adjustments are some recommendations of the general fund. Some of these have, are having net zero cost after the changes, and then we do have a few critical needs that do have a small cost to them, so I'll go over those next. So first, the net zero cost recommendations. This first one here is to take, so our social worker budget that's in the general fund, we have two pieces of it. One, our social worker positions, and the other, our social worker contracted services. So this request here is to reduce the contracted services bucket and offset that decrease by two increased positions, and those would be at Sted and Lemon Valley Elementary.
If I may ask, are we, there's still a shortage of social workers, am I correct? We still can't fill all the positions that we have contracted or otherwise, am I correct?
I believe that's the case. Also, we have chiefs and department directors here to answer further questions.
Okay. And I saw a nod from Dr. Lamarcas in the back, so.
Okay.
Oh, and Catherine, I was, I was, he was right here in my line of sight, then I missed your beautiful red jacket, so thank you. I thought that was the case. Thank you. Trustee Mayberry?
Thank you, Madam President. So just to be clear, by reducing the social worker contracted services, we lose a contracted social worker, and we gain two in-house social workers.
That's correct.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, the next net zero cost recommendation is the creation of school police recruit positions. So this would be to underfill vacant police officer positions with a lower-paying recruit position during the time that that recruit would need to go through an academy and also receive the proper training. And that way, we have, when that recruit finishes all their training, they can slide over into a police officer position.
Okay. Pause you once again. Trustee Church.
Thank you. I don't recall seeing this before, and if I missed it, I apologize. Just want to express my personal opinion, not the Board, that I'm not at all comfortable with that. Short version is, I think we're getting plenty of post-qualified lateral transfer applicants that we don't need to put somebody through an academy. I will point out, based on my experience, and I've seen this many, many times, academies are physically rigorous. I've had people fail at the last day. I've had people drop out at the last day. I've had people graduate and immediately go to another agency, and if they're injured in the academy, we own them, that injury. So just on the record, I'm not in favor of that.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Trustee Rodriguez?
Yeah, I mean, having spoken with current, you know, the union, this police union, speaking with the President and speaking with the chief, frankly, I know they're having a hard time filling laterals, and I think this is an outstanding idea. It's needed. I'm also wondering, have you looked at critical hires or critical officers that might be retired by bringing them back?
Yeah, that's a lifeline right there.
Emily Ellis and Chief Human Resources Officer, for the record. So actually, we did bring an item, I want to say maybe December-January timeframe, to approve school police as a critical needs hire, particularly for our dispatch positions because we have a limited number of dispatchers, and as you know, there's a pretty substantial training curve for those folks, and so being able to utilize retirees, we anticipate that that will be probably the most common use of that designation, but the police officer positions are designated as well. And one of the things that we are excited about from a recruit perspective is not necessarily to go and recruit officers from off the street as recruits, but to look from within our internal talent. And so we have truancy officers and a number of other types of positions that might make for a nice transition into law enforcement. And then there are already folks that are invested in our kids and our communities, and so we're excited about that opportunity as well.
Right, and I think this is addressing a need that definitely needs to be filled here. And I know, I don't want to get into the weeds too much, and I do hear what Trustee Church is saying. I know the Northern Nevada Law Enforcement Academy up here, it can be lengthy, and I would suggest looking at the State Post, which is in Carson City, which I know is a little bit, maybe more of a drive, but I do know they do have housing there, which I know Trustee Church is an advocate for, and is shorter. So I mean, not again the weeds, but my personal recommendation. And, you know, again, I know these positions do need to be filled, and I'm excited for looking and exploring this, but I would advocate, again, you know, just get the word out there and be a little more aggressive. It's just my two cents, but I think this is awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Trustee Rodriguez. I see you, Trustee Church. I'm going to ask the chief to come forward, if you would.
Thank you.
Please share your comments on this, sir, and what you're thinking behind this.
Jason Chivino, for the record. So yeah, Trustee Rodriguez is correct. Over the last couple of years, we've seen a decline in lateral applicants, and we've actually talked to the other agencies as well, and they've seen a decline in lateral applicants as well as academy recruits. So bottom line is, law enforcement's not a career profession that people are chomping at the bit to get into these days. Multiple reasons, we won't get into that. But that being said, we've always preferred to take laterals because they've already graduated the academy, they've already been through an FTO program, they've passed all those things. So you're taking less of a gamble, so to speak, on a lateral employee versus a recruit. We understand the potential that comes with a recruit getting hurt, failing out, all those types of things. However, we're kind of in a position now where we really have to look very hard at how do we fill these positions and not just hope that we get laterals. There's been a couple of things that happened recently that I think will increase our pool for laterals, and that's why we're not, we're not proposing that we fill all current positions with academy recruits, that we would hold positions for laterals so that when we do get lateral applicants that are qualified, we can do those interviews and get them up to speed and hired quickly versus having all of our eggs in one basket with recruits that something could happen to in the academy, et cetera. So that's kind of our plan moving forward with it. As far as costs and things like that go, that's been one of the main drivers in the past why we didn't pursue, is because we didn't have the budget for it. And then working with our business office and looking at salary savings and those types of things from the vacant positions we've had, we think we can make it work as a cost-zero result and get the positions filled. And then to answer one of the questions we had, I think it was for Mr. Church as well, was the retaining of that employee. One of the very first things we did was work with legal on a legal contract for these new hires that would be going to the police academy so that if they did choose to leave immediately upon graduating the police academy, they would be on the hook for reimbursement for the cost that we have into them. And honestly, I feel like once we get people in the door, they're going to want to stay. I mean, that's the bottom line. They're going to like what they see when they get here.
Thank you, chief. We're going to continue on. Trustee Church, you took care of that? Trustee Rodriguez? Chief, stay close.
Not so fast.
Stay close, come on. Thank you.
And actually, this might be more of a question for HR, so I'm not sure. I love the idea that we're looking at our recruiting, police recruits within the district. I think that's awesome. Is there going to be, like, any benefit, like, would their hourly, annual, and sick leave carry over, would their steps come over? How would that work? Like, how would you be aggressively recruiting from within?
So in terms of the mechanics for salary placement, it's going to depend on which bargaining unit the individual comes from. But sick leave is a benefit that's in statute, so absolutely, they would retain that. Any vacation accruals that they have right now, these are positions that are eligible for vacation accrual as well, so all of those balances would come over. But a lot of the kind of, maybe more detailed questions that an employee would have would really depend on which bargaining unit they were coming from, and then how they would transition into police.
Awesome. Okay, great. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I just want to add to it is, I just applaud the creativity because in the meantime, we have all these vacant positions, but this gives us a chance to, and I know there's a little bit of a risk, but we have to do some, just be creative in this without closing the door to the transfers. So I certainly hear that control, I mean, that concern from people who are already post-certified and on the job. So thank you. Good creativity. Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Nicollet?
It's okay. I just want to applaud and thank you for really vetting this. I have every faith in our regional training facility and the programming. It's top-notch. I received my assurance through the discussion at the podium that Budget, HR, Legal, and our Police Department worked on this together, and I appreciate that. And I think it's a marvelous opportunity, and I think it's a new way to do business. And I have every faith it's going to work because, because I have every faith, and it'll be a good test, too, to see if our idea holds, and I believe that it will.
Another way of looking at grow your own. So I think that, and that's a way that we have to maximize all the more, so please, go ahead.
Thank you. So the next group of recommendations here are recommendations with costs. So this first item here is an additional transportation behind-the-wheel instructor, specifically for special education bus drivers, to help train them during onboarding and support training needs during, during the school year, and that comes at a tune of about $63,000. This will be funded out of the Special Education Fund. It's listed here under General Fund Recommendations because it will require an increase of the transfer from the General Fund to the Special Education Fund. The second request was for two school nurse positions. The Health Services staff has seen an increase in the amount of students with diabetes and food allergies and other needs related to IEPs since, you know, over the last five years. So these two positions would help address those needs that they're seeing. That costs about $153,000, and there is the potential for part of it to be grant-funded for a portion of next year. And then lastly, additional funds, about $20,000 for the Human Resources Recruiting Budget to help with recruiting needs and helping to fill our vacancies.
Trustee Church, I thought you'd given a man on that one, so we'll keep moving. We'll keep moving.
The next two slides are those minor reorganizations that Mark had mentioned earlier. So the first one is for our Extended Studies Department. They have overseen the credit recovery program, and this proposed reorganization is to shift the counselor position and the cost of that credit recovery program over to our Curriculum and Instruction Department so that they can provide support for that program. And the last proposed reorganization is the shift of the Education Alliance Department from the Deputy Superintendent to the Office of Communications and Community Engagement, again, to better align support for that department. So the next section of this presentation is our Board Request. So I believe it was back in January, the Board members had outlined some, some areas they would like to see additional supports at. We know we have limited funding for the FY23 budget, and the critical labor shortage was the top priority after those April 12th decisions, but some of those requests are being addressed in some fashion in the budget. So the first one was the English learner support. We do have 13 schools so far that are transitioning to the English Language Development Model to provide better support for EL, EL students. The early education programming and special education support, that was part of the critical labor shortage areas, so those are being addressed through that. And then there's the $20,000 plus the critical labor shortage adjustments to help with recruiting and retention. And then lastly, there was a request for a K-9 unit, and staff will look at possibly seeing if that can be grant-funded.
Vice President Nicollet?
I do have a question in reflection on the Board requests. And I appreciate adding all of these. Thank you. And so is this part of the $451,000 that we're looking at that we, we can use for special items?
So this would be, I guess, kind of separate from that. So the EL, the English learner support, that's already within the budget. It's just shifting from one style of instruction and support to another. The early education programming and special education support, those are potential changes to the staffing guidelines to have more hours of support for aid and assistance for those programs, and then also addressing those through the critical labor shortage area. The recruiting and retention, that's $20,000. That's, you know, departments have identified other savings, which I'll go over here in a minute. So that, I guess, this is all part of the bucket of savings that have been identified in addition to that surplus.
Thank you, Trustee Nicollet. Trustee Church?
Couple of just quick comments on the recruiting and retention. The only reason I didn't jump on it, the devil is in the details, you know, how the money is spent, how we do our recruiting, not just putting money into it. On the K-9 recommendation that came, I believe, from Trustee Rodriguez, I definitely endorse that, and I don't know if there's a way to make K-9 plural, but it doesn't have to be one dog. Various dogs have various functions of what they sniff or what they do, so I'm definitely in favor of exploring that in the plural.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Trustee Mayberry?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, gentlemen. Happy birthday. Special education support, you've addressed this a couple of times already. I apologize, Jeff. Can you just kind of flush that out a little bit more? Anticipated changes to aid and assistance staffing guidelines will get more support to all special ed programs, including a critical labor shortage proposal. What, can you get into the weeds a little bit for me? What does that mean? Thank you.
So the compensation would be part of the critical labor shortage, but in addition to that, we were looking at potential changes to staffing guidelines that would result in those positions having more hours of support during the day to school. So right now, some of them are 27 hours per week, so increasing the amount of hours per week.
So that's fundamentally what it is, just simply increasing the hours for existing workers?
There, that's part of it, and then...
Yeah.
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. And it would also add benefits to those positions, too, which is really important when we're trying to recruit as well.
So really, hours and pay in a way, so make them better positioned. That's great.
It's fantastic. Thank you.
Please.
Okay, so the remaining general fund savings that were identified, departments had identified reductions of about $437,000. Part of this was, you know, rebasing budgets, which we've done in the past, and looking at historical spending patterns and seeing if departments had underspent budgets historically and some had, so we were able to make reductions there. And this, one of those reductions was also the reduction of the distance and blended learning director position. Next, the Storm, the City of Reno Stormwater Utility Fees, it doesn't look, those will be implemented until FY24. We had built $250,000 into the budget, thinking those would be implemented in FY23, but since it'll be put off another year, we've made that reduction as well. So those resulted in about $688,000 of savings. And then there was also another area we looked into, and that was the budget calculation for health insurance costs on new hire positions. So there is a savings when we properly account for that 90-day waiting period employees have before their benefits kick in. So to summarize the general fund changes, what we're looking at here is the savings we just discussed, and then also the top priority are those critical labor shortage adjustments and whatever costs come, come out of those. We believe with the savings we've identified that we can offset whatever those costs are, and then if we really have to potentially tap into our general fund contingency account to address anything above the savings we've identified. But right now, we're anticipating a fourth consecutive general fund, structurally balanced general fund budget.
Thank you. I know, I know there's more, but I just, just want to pause and just applaud staff, really applaud the team for being creative and, and not just how we balance the budget, which we all, I think, you know, we're all supportive of and committed to, but doing some things along the way to address the critical labor, the critical labor shortage, which we don't know how long it's going to be with us. We're praying for a miracle, but as of right now, right, we are where we are, but it's, this is, I like saying, okay, let's get involved in this, and let's see how we can not just be on the receiving end, but how can we be a little bit more aggressive in, in solving some of those issues in ways that make sense, right, in ways that still serve our students and our teachers, right, and our schools, but still doing it in a way that balances the budget. Hopefully, I know we may have a little overflow, but we will be able to pick that up. So I just want to applaud you. That, that's, that's a tremendous amount of work, but it feels better today, right, than, than we've been in the past. So thank you. Really, really hard work. Thank you. Trustee Church?
Thank you. Probably a good time just to sign in. It's all good, and we're, we're at where we're at, and there's nothing we can do about it. One thing that makes me uncomfortable, but it's just the way it is, we know that our superintendent's retiring, we're going to have a new superintendent. They may come in with a whole different view on things, and I guess we'll just deal with that at that point. And then, you know, my, my area that I always harp on is recruiting and retention, and I just want to put out my thought that money is good, but there are other innovative hooks, innovative techniques to recruit and retain other than money. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Please, just go on.
Thank you. So again, just a summary of the priorities. So first priority is the critical labor shortage compensation. Then the second group of priorities are the net zero cost recommendations, and then that $236,000 of cost for the bus driver trainer and the student health services positions along with the, the $20,000 for human resources recruitment. along with the the $20,000 for human resources recruitment budget. So again, we think this will end up in a structurally balanced budget, but we still have to wait and see how the the outcome of negotiations go with our WESP unit. So these would be recommendations for the the final budget, which we'll present in in May, on May 24. And then this is a summary of the general fund sources and uses from the tentative budget that we presented on March 29 to the proposed final budget. So as you can see, no changes to revenues. The the savings that were identified, a portion of that would drop down to that transfers out. That's the transfer to the special ed fund from the general fund for that bus driver trainer position. And as you can see, the ongoing sources and uses balance, so that's that structurally balanced budget. And then again, as as we've discussed in prior meetings, we will have that, the one-time savings on textbooks and the one-time savings on, or sorry, one-time costs for that Washoe Education Association COVID differential resulting in a one-time use of fund balance of about $3.1 million. And that brings our projected total ending fund balance to 10.1% for FY23 with a goal of 12%. We do have a spend down in FY22, and that's related to about $1.2 million in funds that were carried over from last year to for open encumbrances, mainly for department and school technology purchases that had supply chain issues. And then again, a spend down of this $3.1 million for that WEA COVID differential.
Jeff, just to clarify, you and I think this is where trustee Nicolet is going to go. So you had mentioned the COVID differential of 3.1, but it's 6.3, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll rephrase that really quick. So the the total cost of the WEA COVID differential is $6.3 million, but after the one-time savings of textbooks, the net impact is a $3.1 million, and that's what will draw down in fund balance in order to pay that difference.
Trustee Nicolet, thank you.
Thank you, yes, thank you. And additionally, the state will sweep any available fund balance over 16%. At what point does that happen? What's the process there?
So the state is still developing business rules on this. We've asked where they're at on that, but we haven't received an answer quite yet. But it likely would come at the end of the, at the completion of agencies' financial statements and their annual comprehensive financial report, they will look at it at some point after that to sweep any actual ending fund balance over and above the 16% mark. So it hasn't happened yet, and they're still developing business rules, but I think they would wait for the end of the fiscal year to kind of know where you ended up.
Thank you, and and I think what's most important is that you're aware of it, we're aware of it, and so we're watching it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Nicolet. I don't, I don't think we're close right now, so I think we're, I just, I think we're safe. I mean, it's, I'm so glad you don't know how that works, because you shouldn't. We we should not, there's so many other things we can do, right? And especially knowing where the where the target is, right? Especially knowing, I just wanted to just, just make sure and just say again, I appreciate the staff's recommendation of another year of the COVID differential for for our for our teachers, for our certified staff. I mean, it's $1,500, it doesn't change anybody's life, but it's, it's, you know, there are so dang many teachers, right, which is a good thing, still not enough, right, that it's a, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a six, six million plus line item to do even $1,500, but to just do something, you know, to just, a little something that, you know, at least take a vacation this summer, you know, because it's been such a difficult time or difficult year, just a little something to just acknowledge that that teachers have been, have really been going through, has been difficult. So thank you for for putting that in here as a recommendation for the second year. I didn't want that to go unnoticed, I think that's, that's, that's something. So thank you. Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And I might need board counsel keep me online. Hopefully, this is along the same discussion. As far as the bus drivers, kind of going back to slide nine, talking about like train-to-trainer type stuff. I know I've spoken, and another trustee and I've spoken with HR, kind of discussing what can we do to bridge that gap between the bus drivers in the morning and the afternoon for those several hours? Has there been any further discussion on that, like finding tasks that they can do and up their hours and whatnot?
We, you know, we have, I'll let Emily jump in, but we have talked about those combo positions, we're still exploring them, but I'll let Emily add any, anything she wants to here.
Great question. We have been able to get some movement for combo positions. Again, the combining of bargaining units is where things get a little bit tricky sometimes, but we're working to iron out the details for the rest of those potential combos. And then I know that Scott and his team have tasks that they can put bus drivers to work doing over the summer to help kind of bridge that time period. And then, of course, there are opportunities for folks to pick up field trips and other activities that are happening during the summer. So we do have a number of opportunities to help close that gap.
Okay, and when do you think maybe we can explore that or get a little bit more detail on that? When do you think we can?
Yeah, I can certainly provide some additional details for the trustees on what's currently in place, and then that, it's kind of an in-progress thing, right? So as as additional agreements are made and and processes are worked out, then we we publish those opportunities to employees.
Okay, awesome. I'm glad, I'm glad we're able to put that on the record, thank you.
If I may, there's something that may help with that, and then I'll go to you trustee Mayberry, is perhaps an occasional updating superintendent's highlights, and that way we can see that, it's not every week, we know, like, it kind of, maybe it's quarterly, whatever, it's is appropriate, but just to kind of give us an update and we can see that on the record, that'd be great. That, I think that would, that meets your needs, trustee Rodriguez? Awesome.
Happy to do so.
Okay, trustee Mayberry?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. This is a simple question. On slide six, we talked about last, last time we met, reducing vacuuming once per week. Just, can you just tell us how that equates to a cost savings, vacuuming once a week?
If your lifeline went out, okay.
I'll take a stab at that. Good morning, Adam Cersei, for the record, chief of facilities. So somewhat similar to what we're proposing in transportation, where by reducing the total number of staff allocations, we're able to save budget and reinvest that budget into the compensation of the employees. But by reducing the total number of people, we're there, we're also reducing the total amount of work that they're expected to do during their regular shift. So we're able to cover more ground, basically, by reducing the amount of time they have to spend vacuuming, focusing on cleaning and disinfecting.
So so there's, there's a correlation with less staff to less duties, essentially? Yeah, yeah, okay, I get it, thank you. You bet.
And I think, Mr. Basel, you mentioned that staff is still working on where that recommendation may land, so there, there may be some adjustments to what we originally heard, so that, so we look forward to that. Thank you.
So, so that would conclude the general fund unless there's any other questions on the general fund.
Doesn't look like it, so please, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to other funds. The first group of funds are special revenue funds. That's where we have our, our state special education fund, along with the weighted funding categories and other, other grants. The only proposed change to these funds since the tentative budget is that that additional $63,000 transferred over from the general fund to the state special education fund for that bus driver trainer position. So next, we have our internal service funds. So these are our health insurance, property and casualty, and workers' compensation funds, and we do have two proposed recommendations in in these funds. So the first recommendation is the creation of a lead employee benefit specialist position to help support our employees with their benefit needs. Some benchmarking that was provided by by the department was that our current specialist position support over 4,100 members each, and the industry standard is between 1,000 and 1,500 members per per specialist. So this will help with more timely support and better support to our employees. And then lastly, would be to redistribute half of the new, our senior accountant's time from the nutrition services fund equally between these three internal service funds, just to help with more, more accounting in that, or in those funds, and help with analysis when we prepare rates for the funds and other critical accounting duties. Okay, next, we have our, oh, I'm sorry, one more slide on internal service funds, this is just where it stands. Each of these funds stand after those proposed recommendations. So next, we'll go into capital projects fund recommendations, and I'll hand it back to Mark for this.
Thank you, Jeff. So I don't think it's a surprise to anyone, but we've seen, you know, a tremendous explosion or or, explosion's not the right word, expansion of our capital improvement program, pre-WC1 to now. And and so we've tried to provide you some various workload statistics that kind of demonstrate the additional workload that's happened, both for kind of behind-the-scenes, back-office folks, and then also the, on the front lines, our our capital project planning staff. So so here, we start with kind of the budget and the actual expenditures of our capital improvement program. So we've gone from a budget of $111 million in 2015 to $625 million in fiscal year 21 in terms of actual expenditures. So again, we have to budget for the total amount of a project, total encumbered amount of a project when we let out bids and enter into contracts. Actual expenditures have gone from just under $32 million in 2015 to just under $200 million in 2021. So annual expenditures have multiplied by seven times, and the combined budget has increased by six times over that period. And so what we'll talk about are some of those, again, back-office folks that provide the accounting and purchasing functions, their workloads have just, again, expanded greatly, and they're struggling to meet demands such that, you know, people are afraid to take vacations because the workload when they get back is just huge. And so it's, it's really reached a critical level. But again, before we kind of get into that, we wanted to give you a few workload measures. This chart shows, sorry, there's two different measures here. The blue bars are progress payments, just the number of payments we make to our construction contractors and other vendors out of our capital improvement program. 206 to 347, over that, over from 2017 through 2020, and then, and that's per month, and then the value of progress payments has gone, again, from $24 million in 2017 to roughly $150 million over the last three years. So again, you know, we've got to pay our construction contractors, obviously, as they're doing this work. So that's, that's a process in and of itself, it's, it's our project engineers and project planners validating the work done by the contractor, providing a huge packet to our accountant who then, you know, has to do the budgeting and accounting and process those payments. So it's, it is a lot of work to get it right and to make sure that the work done equals the value of the invoice and that we account for these dollars correctly and we don't misspend. And so, you know, there's a lot of work behind the scenes, and when we've had this tremendous growth in our capital improvement plan, we we need the help. We have maintained the same number of buyers that are devoted to our capital improvement program over many years, and we've also had only one bond accountant, dedicated bond accountant pre-WC1 to now. So we've, we tried to shave off and allocate 20% or one day a week of another accountant's time to backstop that bond accountant, and it hasn't worked. Just the work is exceeding kind of the capacity of that one accountant position. Same with the buyer staff. They not only do all the bids for construction projects, but they're involved in the, in the bidding and the, and the purchase orders of all, of the buy lists. So the music instruments and the furniture and all the equipment that goes into schools. And so, again, we've just seen an explosion in the number of work, and and it, it has really affected morale in those areas, but but more, I mean, more directly just has challenged us to keep up with the level of work. So we're opening three new schools in 2022, later this year, or expanded schools, and just the the number of buy lists that are involved in that is tremendous. And so in the business office, we are asking for one more buyer position to go from two buyers that are devoted to the capital improvement program to three, and then we're asking for a second accountant position in the capital improvement program to go from the one bond accountant that's been there forever to now having a bond accountant and then kind of a junior accountant backstopping her. And so those are the two requests in the capital project fund area for, from business, and then just kind of the same reasons, all that increased workload. The capital projects team has requested an additional planning manager one, and this is related to our annual capital renewal program that we talked about on April 12 in our CIP program. So we've gone from an annual capital renewal program of $20 million to more than $40 million in the future, and you only see the one-line item for annual capital renewal program, it's hundreds of projects. The capital funding protection committee does see those individual projects, but it is just a tremendous amount of projects. So again, to keep up with that work, capital projects is asking for that one additional planning manager position, and then also a project coordinator position to be funded out of our government services tax capital fund. That, we've always tried to kind of get away with not having a project manager for those projects in that fund, but we've just reached critical mass, and so we're asking for an additional position there too. So in total, the request is for four additional positions to be funded out of the capital improvement program. You know, these projects don't manage themselves, and they don't account and budget for themselves, and they don't buy the equipment for themselves. So we need staff to, again, address that tremendous increase in projects and funding that we've been fortunate enough to see, but we just need staff to help based on, you know, as compared to kind of the existing staffing levels that existed prior to WC1.
Thank you, Mr. Mather. We have several questions, I saw vice president Nicolet, and then trustee Church and trustee Rodriguez.
Thank you. So on slide 23, the previous slide, I'm, I, I assumed these are school years, school year 2017, so...
Fiscal, fiscal year.
Yes, fiscal year, okay.
Basically same as school year.
Okay, so do we have a sense of what fiscal, the school year will be for 2022? Is there a sense of that, that blue bar?
It, it probably will return to more, north of 300. I don't have an exact number for you, but we have seen just a flurry of activity related, again, those three schools that are opening in in August of 2022.
Certainly, so it's not diminishing?
No.
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 And my second question has to do with your, your, your best estimation, the WC1 funds and the increase in employees, which I totally understand your explanation and need. Will any of that $333,000 be able to come out of WC1 funds as it relates to project management?
Great question. So let me start from the bottom. The, the bottom position is funded out of our GST fund versus WC1. The planning manager one position is funded out of our annual capital renewal program, which traditionally has been funded by rollover debt, not WC1. So, but to the extent we have staff who are directly serving as project manager on a project, their time is allocated directly to the project. So it's part of the project cost, right? We can either contract for that or use internal resources. So to the extent the staff is working directly on a project, that is part of the total entire cost of the project. But again, because this is annual capital renewal, that's more likely being funded by our rollover bonds, i.e. property tax revenues, not WC1. And for our buyer two and accountant position, that is part of our program administration budget, which, again, has been traditionally funded out of our property tax monies, not WC1. again, has been traditionally funded out of our property tax monies, not WC1. So to the extent our planning manager would work on a WC1 project, his or her time would be allocated to WC1-funded areas. But for the most part, these positions are funded out of property tax revenues we receive.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Trustee Church?
Thank you. That was a great question, and I'll kind of piggyback on that. I, I get it. I concur 100% in what you're saying on new staff being needed. My thought, too, they probably pay for themselves, because if they spot something, if they're overburdened, they might miss something. If they have the time, they'll probably spot cost-saving measures that will pay for their salary. On the WC1, thank you for clarifying that. There was some consternation among voters who felt that some of the pre-existing positions that existed before WC1 later became funded under WC1. I share their consternation, not saying it's illegal, just saying the voters didn't really understand that in advance. But this is, this is different. One question on, since we're on bonding, what's the, do we have the ability to bond more? I mean, are we tapped out based on projected revenues? Or could we come up with more bonds if we need it?
That's a great question. We will actually go over that on May 10th. We will be bringing forward to you a resolution to go to our debt management commission and the oversight panel for school facilities for additional bonds we'll issue. And as part of that presentation, I'll have a PowerPoint document that, that provides you some sense of the capacity we have to bond versus what we're actually bonded for. The short answer is yes, we have additional capacity to bond. Part of that's related to kind of our debt profile and the bonds that are maturing over the next decade. But we'll go into that in more depth on May 10th.
All right. And then, based on that chart, and it's, not sure I understand it right, but we've been going at 100 miles an hour building schools. We've got the new high school coming on and the other schools. We did break ground on Jay Wood Raw Elementary. Would it be fair to say, where maybe, even though I know we need these people, maybe we're going to go from 100 down to 80 miles an hour in the projected near five-year plan?
You know, it's a really good question. I'm glad you asked it, because I think back when WC1 was passed and, and coming here shortly thereafter, I think there was kind of an expectation, we'll get through the bulge of school facilities, we need to address long-term overcrowding issues. And then it'll, you're right, it'll kind of go from 100, 100 miles an hour to 80. And what we've seen is that has not been the case. There is no relief on the horizon. And, and we went, you know, kind of on April 12th, Adam went over the fact that we're, conduct, we will be conducting a study that will look at existing facilities and more intensive renovation, maybe tear downs, demolitions, construction of new schools in our existing core areas. I just don't see where we will slow down. And so part of the reason for the request of these positions is just a recognition of that fact, that at least in the capital improvement program that, which is five years that you approved on April 12th, there's no slowing down. There's just some really critical needs in our existing core areas. And, and in growing areas, too, like Cold Springs that you saw on April 12th. So it's a great question, but I, and I think people are holding out hope that staffing could maintain at the same level, because there might be a drop, and there's just not.
Right. And clearly, if we go to 90, we, miles an hour, we still need them. My final comment, just for the listeners that are watching and going, what's WC1? It's a never-ending sales tax for Washoe County only that raised our sales tax to 8.265%. That money going specifically to capital projects, building, and renovation. And as Mr. Mathur said, without mentioning years, there were, we have high schools, correction, we have schools that are older than I am that are still being used. And so those were built in the 50s. The 60s are not older than I am, but we have schools, yeah, dating the 50s and 60s that may need to be literally torn down and start over, whatever. So just to clarify, for anybody listening, that's what WC1 is. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Church. Trustee Rodriguez and then trustee Mayberry.
Thank you, Madam President. With these four positions, obviously, I'm, I can understand that the workload is just crazy right now. But with the current staff you guys have, have you guys seen any hiccups or any projects to be delayed due to paperwork, things like that?
Well, I'll tell you, we're real close in the purchasing area. It's, it's tough. We have tried stopgap measures, and I should have mentioned, we had a one-year-only position that we created that's being basically replaced by that permanent buyer position. So we're actually not net increasing staff, but we had to fill it with a retiree, so she is working half-time. So I guess in that sense, maybe we get an extra half, half of an FTE. But it, it's very critical in our purchasing department to try to keep up with that work. And that's not just in the capital area, but in the general fund area, too. We just don't have general fund resources to add a buyer position. So far, it hasn't happened, but I'm afraid if we don't do anything, that could be a reality.
Right. And with these positions, you'll be able to streamline things quicker, make things more smooth, and we have further explosions, you said?
Right.
We'll be able to meet those needs, correct?
That's right.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Mayberry.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to clarify that something I think trustee Church might have mentioned, that the, the sales tax increase, and maybe you misspoke, you said increase the sales tax, something like 8.2. Yeah. But, but the WC1 was only a half a penny increase, right?
Yes, .54%.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. That's, that's important as well. These are good questions. These are good. And that's really just, it really does make sense that we've been doing this, all of this building and repair work and ordering everything that that's necessary in staff and have, we haven't really increased the staff. It just makes sense, you know, and certainly in my opinion.
Thank you, Madam President. I, and I concur with that. I just think these permanent positions are going to make the people who are, are maybe going to go, okay, I can do this. I can do this, you know? And that's really important, because if you, if you, if you're, you're not doing a good job, because how can you? Thank you.
Certainly. Seems like the board's seen there's a good understanding of this. I think a connection to it also is just work environment, you know, culture. We talk a lot about retaining employees and, and then certainly in this market, a recognition of that kind of workload increase. And sometimes we can't do anything about it, but in the case, when we, when we can, and we recognize it, then certainly we should. So, so again, please, go ahead.
That's right. And so the next slide is just a summary, then, of total appropriations and sources for our capital projects funds. And these are multiple funds that include kind of ongoing capital project funds, like our GST capital fund or WC1 fund, and then new, new funds that we create when we issue new debt. So this aligns, matches up to the CIP that you approved on April 12th, and therefore includes a number of new projects funded by a, a new rollover bond issuance that, again, you'll hear on May 10th. You were continuing kind of the $3.4 million annual cyclical replacement of our fleet and so forth. And I did note, I know Jason Geddes, our, our conservation manager is pursuing a new grant for electric buses. So hopefully, we'll have, he'll have some good news, and we'll have our first electric buses in the future. So anyhow, just thought I'd throw that in. In terms of debt service funds, these are the funds we use to pay the annual principal and interest payments, just like your mortgage on debt we issue. We, as I think you heard on April 12th, and again on May 10th, we'll go over it in more depth. You know, our coverage to pay debt service continues to be strong. So we've included the new debt issuances that we planned for in '23, and also, again, we have a number of series that roll off. So we account for that when we prepare these budgets. I'll turn it over to Jeff for the enterprise fund discussion.
Thanks, Mark. So our, our enterprise fund is our nutrition services fund. This fund isn't finalized yet. We're still working with the nutrition services department for any possible changes to their budget for FY '23. Some changes we anticipate for, for the May 24th board meeting are any inclusion in anticipated or known compensation adjustments to the critical labor shortage, collective bargaining, and then also the state promised to, to fund universal free meals in FY '23, so that budget will, will reflect that as well. So lastly, we have the rest of the budget process. So this was our, our fourth, fourth meeting so far this year. We'll have our fifth and, and final meeting, the May 24th board meeting. So we'll have our hearing on the tentative budget that day, and then also finalize recommendations for the final budget, and then hopefully approval of the final budget, so we can submit that by the, the June 8 deadline. So with that, we'll, we'll take any further questions.
Okay. Why don't we start with, if there's any public comment on this item, JJ? None. Okay. Let's bring it back here to the board table. We've, most of us have asked our questions along the way, but if there are other questions or general questions, we certainly want to take them at this time. The whole idea, obviously, is to end in the, in the, in the motion, if that's the pleasure of the board. Trustee Church?
Just one brief question. If I understand past briefings, by state law, there's a tiny bit of flexibility, but, but generally, this is set in stone, not easily changed once it's approved.
Trustee Church, that's correct. So we do have the ability to augment our budget after the final budget has been set and approved, but we have to, we have to have available resources more than we anticipated in order to do that. We'll also have to adjust our, our budget based on the first quarter's average daily enrollment, once we have that. And that's typically the, the presentation we have in December when we present the December augmented budget.
Thank you, trustee Church. Trustee Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. With the K-9 and the grants, things like that, can, can you guys keep us kind of in the loop with that? I know there's a kind of a bit of support for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. Any other questions, comments on this that we haven't, that we haven't covered at this time? If not, looking for a, a motion, if it's the pleasure of the board, and really the motion is to just direct the superintendent to continue to analyze and report back. There are a few budget issues that are still being resolved, as mentioned in the presentation, but we're, as trustee Church indicated, we're, we're getting down, we're getting down the track here now. So, trustee Mayberry?
I'll, I'll move what you said.
We'll, we'll take a soon move in a second. Okay, you move what I said, you second what he said. Okay, we'll take that. You got that, JJ? JJ, so good. All right. Any further, we do have a motion on the floor in just a minute. Any further discussion? Okay. Saying none. All those in favor, please, indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. The motion carries. At the record, it is unanimous, seven to zero. Gentlemen, again, thank you, thank you so much for your work, for expressing the, the interest and concerns of the board, and really particularly the, the creative work being done on the critical labor shortage and, and paying more as we can. I know it's challenging, because we don't, we just don't get enough, but coming up with some creative ways to do that. It's, it's important. So thank you so much. Okay. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, meet us down, meet us down in the little room. We got you. Yeah, yeah, board, lunch on the, on, on the board, on the board. Yes, on the board, yes. Yes, hey. All right. We're going to move to our closing item. See if, do we have any closing public comment?
Jeff Church?
Uh, trustee Church?
Still good, good morning or good afternoon. Nothing urgent today. Just occasionally, I come before the board and present my personal request for future agenda items. So there's a handout of 12 of them for your reading pleasure. I welcome any other people that have any other trustees that have any ideas for agenda items as well. I certainly don't expect that all 12 will end up on any future agendas, but if there's any that resonate with you, feel free to pass that on to the board president. One of the real simple ones might be the Carlin Challenge Academy briefing. I'd just like to hear from them. I have yet to be out there at Carlin, Nevada, to see their live-in academy, but I'm looking forward to it. But maybe they'll come here and brief us. But that's it. Just my request to you as trustees in an open forum, and rather than do it at a later meeting, it's nice and quick today. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Church. That's all, that's all the public comments that we have? Okay, then, this first meeting, one of three, one of three, this first meeting is adjourned, and we will come back here. We'll start our board meeting. We have just a little bit, little bit less than an hour. We'll start our board meeting at 1:00, and of course, our special meeting will be at 4:00. Thank you very much, everybody.